Craven County Board of Commissioners's regular session for Monday, December 7th, is now in session. If you please put your telephones on silent ring. And I'd just like to mention, today is December 7th. December 7th, 1941, this country was attacked and many of our servicemen were killed. So we'd hope that everybody remember that date and remember those people that lost their Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Sure. Commissioner Liner?
Here.
Commissioner Booker?
Here.
Commissioner McCabe?
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Here.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Here.
Chairman Mark?
Here.
Can we stand for the pledge and the prayer?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh Father of mercies and God of all comfort, our only help in time of need, we humbly beseech thee to behold, visit, and relieve all thy sick servants for whom our prayers are desired. Look upon us all with the eyes of thy mercy, comfort us with a sense of thy goodness, preserve us from the temptations of the enemy, and give us patience under our affliction. In thy good name restore us to health and enable us to lead the residue of our lives in thy fear and to thy glory, and grant that finally we may dwell with thee in life everlasting. Amen.
Amen. All right, next is the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'd like to ask that we take and put the general public comment that is at, that is item number 20, and just go ahead and move it up to item number four, under the regular petition of citizens tonight.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nays, the ayes have it. Next is presentation of a plaque and resolution recognizing Commissioner Johnny Sampson, Jr. And I believe his daughter is here, Barbara. Resolution recognizing Commissioner Johnny Sampson, Jr. Whereas Commissioner Johnny Sampson was a Craven County lifelong resident and lived in the city of New Bern, and whereas Commissioner Johnny Sampson was sworn in by Clerk of Superior Court Gene Boyd on December 2nd, 1996, to begin his first term as Craven County Commissioner, and whereas Commissioner Johnny Sampson served in the role for 24 years until his death on November 5th, 2020. Whereas he served as the chairman to the Craven County Board of Commissions on December 2nd, 2002 through December 1st, 2003, and again on December 4th, 2006 through December 3rd of 2007. And whereas Commissioner Sampson most recently served on the Craven County Tourism Authority, the Eastern Carolina Workforce Development Board, the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, and the North Carolina Association of Black County Officials. And whereas he has served on the Neuse River Council of Governments Consortium, the Local Emergency Planning Committee, the Craven Evaluation Training Center, Eastern Carolina COG, the Kellenberger Foundation, the Tryon Palace Commission, the New Bern County Library, Craven County Aging Planning Board, and Craven County Health Board, the Criminal Justice Advisory Board, and the Down East RPO during his time as Commissioner. Whereas Commissioner Sampson was passionate about advocating for the elderly and the children of the Craven County, the downtrodden, and those needing a helping hand, he served as a voice for those who couldn't speak and stand up for themselves. And whereas he served Craven County with devotion and integrity, he was an icon in Craven County and the state of North Carolina as a leader, a mentor, a role model. And whereas Commissioner Sampson was a great man of faith, a friend of all people, and a civil rights leader who loved his family, his neighborhood, and Craven County. Now therefore, Craven County Board of Commissioners recognizes Commissioner Johnny Sampson, Jr. for his great love and service to God, his dedication service to the Craven County, and his compassion for all mankind, or adopt it on the 7th day of December, December 2020. And Vice Chairman, if you would present that place.
The resolution has passed. This is a plaque. Craven County presenting the nominee Johnny Sampson, Jr. to the dedicated service of the Commissioner. And he gives the day to service there on the board and also his chairman. And this is part of the ribbon that was cut recently at the convention center for the rededication of it. We wanted your family to have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you want to say a few words, Barbara?
I just wanted to give homage to God, the Craven County Board of Commissioners. Oh, to give my boys. I'd like to thank you for my family, for my mother especially. She wanted to be here, but she was financially wealthy, so it was too cold at that time. And I'm glad to appreciate all acts of kindness y'all showed us from the weight to the funeral and even coming over the house. We really appreciate it. And I say again, thank you, everybody in the house.
Okay, thank you. Next is public hearing, economic development, Project Bud. Jeff Wood.
As requested on the 60th day of November 2020 pursuant of North Carolina General Statute, Craven County intends to convey for economic development purposes fee simple interest, six acre tract of land known as 19-1 in the Craven County Industrial Park. The tract is valued at $20,000 an acre for a total value of $120,000, and the county intends to convey, sell same as for such value. The county believes the proposed conveyance will stimulate and stabilize the local economy, result in the creation of substantial number of new permanent jobs in the county, and result in increased tax revenues to the county. The purchaser Bayfront Development, who is here tonight, intends to invest in the shell building based off of the positive element that has transpired in the industrial park, including the development, construction, and sale of the Craven 100 Alliance Building in 2019. Bayfront has also made its decision based off of its analysis of the county's investment into Lot 19 to include recent projects to extend water and sewer into the lot.
Do I have a motion to go into public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nays, we're now in public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, nobody has signed up.
Motion go out of public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nays, the ayes have it. Thank you. Next is public hearing, pawnbroker ordinance.
Mr. Chairman, I'm glad to give the board a brief introduction, if you would like, on this topic.
Okay.
As you may recall from your last work session, the Craven County Sheriff's Department has requested that the county exercise its statutory discretion to require that local pawnbrokers report their transactions electronically to the sheriff's department. Those businesses are currently required to report their transactions, although they're by paper, a deputy has to pick them up daily and they have to be processed basically by hand. This ordinance would obviously streamline that process tremendously and allow the sheriff and his department to more efficiently follow leads for any missing property. The board did have one question in particular at the work session, and it was basically the burden on these businesses to implement this, and apparently it's at no cost and will require about a 30-minute software upgrade, so it's something the businesses can easily comply with. The matter is before you for a public hearing this evening, as is customary for all new ordinances that the county is considering.
Okay. Do I have a motion to go on a public hearing?
I'm moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nays, the ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman, nobody has signed up for this public hearing.
Okay. Do I have a motion to go out of public hearing?
I'm moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nays, the ayes have it. Next is petition, petition of citizens, agenda topics. There is nobody present, I understand, so we will go to petition of citizens general.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. We have one citizen tonight desiring to speak before the board, Ms. Linda Moore, from 4,442 Riverside Drive in New Bern, to discuss District 3 Commissioner's seat. Good evening.
Good evening. Do I need to say my name and address again?
Yeah, if you don't mind.
Certainly. Linda Moore, 4442 Riverside Drive, New Bern. Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I'm here as Chair of the Craven County Democratic Party. For the North Carolina General Statute, Section 153A-27, the Craven County Democratic Party Executive Committee recommended Brenda Carter George to fill the unexpired term of the late Commissioner Johnny Sampson. You each should have received by email a copy of our letter of nomination sent to Chairman Mark.
Was received.
Great. Mrs. George is eligible to fill Commissioner Sampson's seat because she is a member of the same political party as Mr. Sampson and is a resident of District 3. We believe that Mrs. George is and will bring significant skills and abilities to this position based on her professional work experience. She has strong support from District 3 residents and will support her constituents well. She also has a wide range of experience and qualifications which are important for all of Craven County. She is actively involved in, locally with the Craven County Community College Foundation, the New Bern Historical Society, her church, and her sorority. She has contacts in Raleigh, relationship in the governor's office, and the state legislature due to her employment. She knows who to call, and they are likely to answer her call. These contacts can be of great value to the entire county moving forward. She has a history of working across the aisle with political parties. In addition, she has worked with a broad range of social, economic, economic, and racial groups. She has excellent communication skills and is articulate both in her speech and her writing. She's a person of high integrity, who is collaborative, thoughtful, and even tempered. She is also a team player, able to lead and willing to follow. I know my letter told you all the things that, all the steps we had taken to try to have a very transparent process and collaborative process with people in District 3 and throughout the county. We understand that you are not bound by our recommendation, but we strongly urge you to give her the highest consideration for the position. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for coming in.
Certainly. Thank you for seeing me earlier.
Next is the consent agenda, which consists of the minutes of November 16th, regular session, the minutes of November 16th, reconvened session. Tax releases and refunds, sheriff's office budget amendment, donations, military service persons of the quarter, and Department of Transportation Old Cherry Point Road Safety Project Resolution.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a round call vote, please.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Chairman Mark?
Yes. I'm going to take chairman's privilege right now for a moment. And we've been under an unusual year this year due to the pandemic. And I think as a county, we have done one heck of a job, and the Commissioners are responsible for it as well as the staff. And I think we've done everything we can to try and keep it at a minimum. We can do more. I hate to see businesses close and go out of business, and I think if we all would wear a mask, distance ourselves by six feet, and wash our hands constantly, that we could keep these businesses in business. I especially want to thank Jack White, Gene Hodges, Greg Warren, Amber Parker, Jeff Wood, Nan Holton, our county clerk, Allison Newcomb, our executive secretary, and even our attorney, Ari. No, I'm serious. I mean, without this staff, they just did a wonderful job this year, an excellent job. And I think the Commissioners should take a hand. I think that you've all done a great job under the circumstances we've had of work. And I want to thank you for your cooperation. I want to thank you for being behind me when you've had to be behind me, and I won't forget it. You know, it's funny, somebody, one of my Commissioners here said to me, "I think that you're the hurricane commissioner." I mean, I served on three hurricanes, two major snowstorms, and I get kidded about that, so I guess it's good somebody else takes a break so we don't have a hurricane next year. But it has really been an honor to serve with all of you people. I think that, you know, the one thing that I think stands out, and that's why we do well as a county, is that we have a board that keeps taxes low. At the same token, we don't cut our services. In fact, we've added to our services over the years, the things that we have added, the animal shelter, the prison, a number of things. And going back over the 12 years I've served, I probably could come up with about 26 items. But I'm not, because I won't remember them all, and I'm not going to embarrass myself. But I just want you to know, I think that this county has been very fortunate to have Commissioners on this board that really watch out for the people, try to make it so that everybody can enjoy the life of Craven County. And at this point, I'm going to turn the meeting over to our attorney, Laurie Grady.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, it is the time of the year that we have our organizational or reorganizational meeting. The first item on the agenda is the election of a new chairperson. Your bylaws state that the county attorney presides over this part of the meeting, so here I am with my apologies. The process I will follow is I will open the floor for nominations, and that will just be by voice nomination. Then when it's apparent to me that the nominations are concluded, I will ask for a motion, a second, and a vote to close the nominations. If we only have one nomination, I'll ask for a motion, a second, and a vote for that person to be elected chairperson. If we have more than one nomination, I'll ask our clerk to call the roll so each person can vote by voice by last name. Does that make sense?
Yes.
With that, I will open the floor for nominations.
Mr. County Attorney, I would recommend that Jason Jones be nominated as the chairman.
Commissioner Jones's name is in nomination for the position of chairman. Any further nominations?
I move the nominations to be closed.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion to close the nominations and a second have both been made. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, by a like sign. And at this time, since there is one nomination, I would entertain a motion that Mr. Jones be elected chairman for today through next December.
I'm moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion on the floor and a second to elect Mr. Jones as chairman of the Craven County Board of Commissioners for the coming year. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Mr. Jones, congratulations. I turn the meeting over to you, sir.
Is your family going to come up here?
This is a nice one, it's pretty.
Does she want, your daughter want to hold the Bible?
Jason, where you coming, Jason?
Okay. Do you, Jason Jones, solemnly and sincerely swear that you'll support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina not inconsistent therewith, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office as chairman of the Craven County Board of Commissioners?
I move.
Do you, Jason Jones, faithfully and truly, to the best of your skill and ability, promise to execute the duties of the office of chairman of the Craven County Board of Commissioners of the county?
I move.
With this hand and official seal, December 7th, 2020, be with you. Strong end.
(laughter)
I'm asking you to.
Mr. County Attorney, I know our agenda says that the chairman can handle the election of vice chairman, but if it's all right with you, you did such a great job, I'm going to turn it over to you for that.
Well, I appreciate that, Mr. Chairman. I'm glad I managed to do something right for a change. We will follow the same procedure for the election of vice chairman, if that is acceptable to the board. That being said, the floor is open for nominations for the position of vice chairperson.
Mr. Attorney, Vice Chairman McNomination, Denny Booker?
Second.
Okay. Any further nominations?
Major Booker, none of you close.
Second.
Okay, the motion is on the floor and has been seconded to close nominations for the position of vice chairman. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Since we have one name in nomination, at this point, I will entertain a motion to elect Commissioner Booker as vice chairman.
Take that motion.
Second.
There's a second. There's a motion on the floor and a second to elect Commissioner Booker as vice chairman of the Craven County Board of Commissioners. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, congratulations, sir.
Do you, Denny Booker, solemnly and sincerely swear that you will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office as vice chairman of the Craven County Board of Commissioners?
I move.
Do you, Denny Booker, promise to faithfully and truly, to the best of your skill and ability, execute the duties of office of vice chairman of the Craven County Board of Commissioners of the county? Do you autograph this?
I like that, you're going to repeat everything. She said all one time, that's good. Right? You get nervous, start repeating everything you see.
If the board will agree at this time, let's take a five-minute recess to allow staff to clean everything, and we all are going to probably change seats. Before we move on to the next item, I would just like to say thank you, Chairman Mark, for all you've done for our board this past year. You definitely have served under some tough circumstances, and you've done a fabulous job in leading this board and leading our county, and I appreciate your service. The next item on the agenda, item seven, is the establishment of meeting dates, times, and locations in your agenda packet on attachment seven. There it is provided for you. We will need a motion and a second, and...
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hear none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Next item is the Commissioner appointments. If all the Commissioners will be in agreement for right now, I think it is in the best of our, for all of us to just wait until we have some more discussions with each other, and also as we prepare for whoever our new Commissioner may be. So if you will, just continue to serve on the current boards that you are and carry on. Hear no objection to that?
I'm moved.
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed. Next item is the pawnbroker ordinance discussion. Mr. Grady?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. The ordinance is in your agenda packet. Don't have much to add to what I mentioned at the introduction to the public hearing. If the board elects to adopt the ordinance, I would suggest the motion also include an effective date in January 1 would be as good as any. The sheriff's department says that is plenty of time to get the businesses linked up with the software and to meet the reporting deadlines. I did see the sheriff. I'm sure if the board has any questions, he would be available to answer them.
Sheriff Hughes, if you're still in the hallway, will you come in here?
Room over there. He's right over here.
Sheriff, we just wanted to give you the opportunity to make any comments that you may have on the pawnbroker ordinance.
Yes, sir, thank you. This is something that we've been working on for quite some time. Major McFadden has been working closely with the attorney. They've got an ordinance very similar to this in the city of New Bern that enables New Bern PD to get valuable information from our pawn shops. This will greatly help us in our investigations, especially when it comes to stolen property. And as we're aggressively going after stolen firearms and property in this county, to be able to get this type of reporting straight from the pawn shops, as opposed to having to send a deputy specifically to everyone to gather tickets and then hand, go through all these tickets individually, it's very time-consuming, and it takes a lot of resources to get that done. So this is going to greatly increase our effectiveness in regards to going after stolen property in this county.
Any questions for the sheriff, any Commissioners?
I would make a motion if we accept this.
All right, we have a motion, have a second. Have a second from Commissioner McCabe. Any discussion on the motion? Hear none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
County Attorney, do you need anything else?
Just to clarify, the motion was to make the ordinance effective on January 1, I believe. Yes, sir, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, next item is under Departmental Matters, Economic Development, Project Bud. Mr. Wood?
Mistress, you're chairman.
Good evening.
I already talked about this through the public hearing, so I won't belabor too much on that. I would like to say again, Ron Sutton, representing Bayfront Development, is here tonight, even though he understands that the limitations, not being able to get in the building or in the room itself, he wanted to show his commitment to this project. They've already started to procure local vendors, including an engineering firm, and intend to continue to do that with the construction company that they partner with. And so, very excited to work with them. I think this is a great example of economic development. excited to work with them. I think this is a great example of economic development done right, where the economic development department with the Craven 100 Alliance build a building, and it showed a proof of concept for the private sector to take an interest. And so, more than happy to answer any questions on this project, and then ask the board to authorize sale of Lot 19-1 for market rate $20,000 an acre.
Mr. Chairman?
Second.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion and a second to authorize the sale of six acres, Lot 19-1, within the industrial park to Bayfront Development for the market rate of $20,000 per acre. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Mr. County Attorney, you have anything to add?
Mr. Chairman, we've had these transactions several times over the years. It's been a little while since this board has dealt with one. The ordinance basically assigns to the chairman, the vice chairman, and the management team, the authority to execute what needs to be executed to go to closing, things that any seller in a real estate closing would have to tender. I think we'll be closing in the next week or two, so this property will be back on the tax rolls as of January 1.
All right, any other questions from the board? Hear none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passed. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next item is health and animal services update on proposed fees for the Craven Pemico Animal Service Center. Ms. Ellen Beeson, welcome.
Hi there.
How you doing?
You guys haven't seen me for a little while. I know we have a busy night, but I just wanted to start out by introducing our manager of the shelter and rescue coordinator, Tommy Bell. He come to, he's coming from Carteret, 11 years as an officer and 24 years as a tech, and he's helping with our spay and neuter and all of our surgeries and things that we have coming up. But along with that, I'm going to have him just tell you a couple things, but I just wanted to let you guys know that we've taken in 4,060 animals this year. 58% were cats, 40% dogs, and the other 2% other. We got 100% on our state inspection, which is something that Craven has never done, and I have never personally done. Our youth rate has gone from 76.8% to 20.2%. We have rescued, we've had sent out to rescue 34% of our animals, which is 1,380 animals saved, adoptions at 24%, which is 975, and we returned to owner 853 animals. This year, we gave rabies shots for 1,836 animals, which is pretty much quadruple what we're used to doing. Schedule is working well. Volunteers, we now have over 50, and of course, we still have to limit them because of COVID and making sure the schedule's good. With that, we did try the pilot, Take Me Home Tuesday for late night. It wasn't really working for us. Nine months, we ran this thinking we were going to do well, and we brought in two customers during that time. We bring in more customers on Saturdays. So that's something to take a look at. And as far as Craven County Community College is sending over all of their people to do their clinicals with us, and we've started up a program with PetSense, and we have a new program we want to adopt, which is senior cats for senior laps. So that being said, I'm going to let Tommy step up here. He's got some pictures to show you that you guys can take a look at later on, but just basically some of the rescues we've been doing, and I'll let him say hi.
Good evening, sir.
Thank you for having me. I really appreciate this. And I brought three pictures of a dog that ran loose in Pemico County for three years. During the three-year period, she had five litters of puppies. We captured her, and we have sent her to a rescue in June, and from there till December is where she stayed. And now she's in her forever home, as everybody calls it, and she's in Boston. She just flew out the first of December, and you can look at the pictures and see how much change has taken place in this dog in a matter of six months. And I've also brought pictures of a little dog that came into the animal shelter who was completely blind, and we have sent her to a rescue for veterinary care. And now it's been, she's been there for like 22, 23 days, I think now, and she does have vision in her right eye and partial vision in her left eye, thanks to their care. So we're doing more than just saving lives. We're changing lives so animals can see and have everyday life. And when, with our rescue programs, we work with pilots, with pilots and paws, and they have flown out a large number of dogs for us, especially hounds, that go to the rescue in Asheville, and they've also flown the little dog to Virginia where she's at now. And I brought some pictures of the dogs that we fly out, so you can see what it's like for them. And anytime y'all would like to come to the shelter, I'd be honored to show you around and show you the changes we made in the shelter environment. And Eileen and I work with a great staff of people who care about what they do, and it shows at the state level, and all the rescues that come in and other shelters, no matter why they come in. I've always heard one compliment, "This is the cleanest shelter I've ever been in." And to me, that's the world. Thank you for having me.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for letting us have that moment. I know you guys don't get to see us a whole lot, but the reason why we are here today is to try to go over our fee schedule. And I have a copy of the fee schedule here with the changes that need to be made as far as everything. I don't know if yours show it in red, but, okay, so there are some changes that need to take place. We have the adoption of a dog going from 100 to 125 because we're going to start to test for heartworm, and the heartworm actually costs $20. And so, with the testing materials and the things that we would need, we really need to up that to 125, knowing that the animal is going to be spayed or neutered going out the door. We have a senior cats for senior laps that we wanted to start. This is a new program. We have some cats that'll come in, and they're going to be six years and up, and we'd like to offer our seniors the ability to adopt this cat for $10, so that the cat can get out and have a great life, you know, and so we wanted to start that program. Another change that we wanted to make is because we are spaying and neutering, for our adoptable animals only, we really need to start to charge our rescues $25 on cats and $50 for dogs, just for our adoptable animals, not for the ones that maybe need some healthcare, as Tommy was talking about. Those we'd like to call Craven Care Animals, and we'd like those to go out for free because they have a long journey ahead of them needing a lot of medical. So that's another change there at the bottom. The PetSense has started working with us, and we currently have six cats there. We were able to adopt out five already, and we'd like to have them have, they, they work on a program where the cats are $65 or less, and we'd like to have that. And then we have some, our, the changes to our testing, for heartworm testing and for FELV, FIV, the reason that's changing is because the price is going up. The medicine is just costing more. And then we've never really had any guidelines for other animals, and boy, are we seeing some other animals. We have 24 birds. We've had seven pigs since the beginning of the year, a lot of farm animals. So, Mr. Jones, I really could use a visit from you, as we set up the back there. But there's a, there's a need for it, and we don't really, I mean, right now, it's sort of like, well, how much is a bird? Oh, I don't know, $5. We need something in writing to show our people, this is what we need to adopt, and we are making sure that they're going to homes that they're allowed to be in. You know, we had a rooster, and these animals seem to be just roaming in the middle of New Bern, by the way, like, you know, a rooster and a pig in the middle of New Bern. So that being said, we came up with something based on looking at a lot of different shelters, and we, we kind of went in between, so that we could get a good guideline started. So today, I'm just looking to get all of these approved.
All right, before we approve this, are there any questions you got from Ms. Beeson?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to make sure that I understand what I think I do, the Craven Care Animal Adoption Fee, that these are for animals who need medical care, and if a citizen comes in and says, "I want this dog," and I'll vet it and get the, make it care of, and this, that, and the other.
They're still able to do that. They do have to sign a disclosure.
Right.
That we have discussed everything that we do know, and they're able to take the animal, and so is a rescue. And this could be for pregnant, maybe moms that just had babies.
Mm-hmm.
This could be for blind, older situations where there, there's medical needed. It's not for what we would say like a regular adoptable animal.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and for the, the, the older cats for seniors, I like this because cats are good pets for people who are housebound. They don't have to be walked. It's, they're, they're minimal maintenance, and after six, they're cuddly. But I guess my question is, what, do you have a lot of cats that are older this is going to apply to?
It's not an extreme amount, but there is a good amount. I mean, as I was saying, with 58% of those animals, so 58% of 4,000 animals are cats, and I would say that maybe 15% are over that six-year spot, and it, and they take up a lot more time at the shelter because nobody's coming in to adopt them.
Mm-hmm.
And so by, by pairing this and showing this as a program, I think we would do better. We actually had a very heartfelt story where a gentleman came in looking for an older cat, and he adopted the one from our big boxer bust, and it was an 11-year-old cat. And we couldn't have been more happy to see that, but we wanted to do more for him, and so that got us thinking about this program.
That's, that's all I got, Mr. Chair.
Okay, any other questions? Vice Chairman?
Eileen, I just see on here that you've got a hedgehog. If you ever get a hedgehog, you need to call me, because my wife has always wanted a hedgehog.
Really?
Don't ask me why.
Well, don't be surprised when I call, because we get them.
All right, any other questions? Hear none. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to set the new fees, and is this correct? This will be effective December 1, 2020, okay? Any further discussion on the motion? Hear none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passed. Thank you both for being here this evening. Appreciate what you do.
We have an awesome newsletter, and I'm going to leave this out for anybody who wants a copy.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. You guys have a good night.
Good evening. Next on the agenda is Recreation Department, the bait grant for West Craven Park outdoor exercise area. Mr. Billy Wilks. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. How's everybody tonight?
Good, thank you.
Good. We, in the last several years and through our budget process, we've established West Craven Park has a need for a walking area and some outdoor fitness equipment. What we're seeing is a lot of folks are walking around our park but don't have a designated area. At Creekside, most of you have seen, we have a quarter of a mile walking trail, and we also have some outdoor fitness equipment. So this is going to be somewhat similar to that project that we, we have at Creekside. That's what we're trying to do with West Craven Park, add some walkability, not only for everyday users, but also for parents of kids that might be practicing lacrosse, football, baseball, soccer, tennis, or any of the sports they play there at West Craven Park. So we've established it as probably one of our biggest needs in any of our parks, and exceptionally at West Craven Park. So that's what we, we came forward with. We were able to secure three grants this year, one from the Craven Community Foundation, which was nice enough to grant us about $3,719, $3,000 from the International Paper Foundation. We also received an equipment grant for $6,000, which go directly towards the outdoor fitness equipment, which we have to do fairly quickly. So that runs out the end of December. So we've gotten already in hand about 6,600 plus, 6,000 plus 6,600, so that's 12,600, and now the Bait Foundation grant awarded us the amount of 32,500, which we're asking for a match. The second part of your narrative or explanation talks about timeline a little bit. We like to get projects done as quick as we can, obviously. This will be somewhat contingent upon whether with asphalt and concrete, we'll need both for what we're planning on doing. But you can see what our process is. We're looking like ordering the equipment this month and hopefully being done with the project by sometime in the middle of spring, maybe April timeframe. And that's what we're looking for, is that match tonight for the Herald of Bait Foundation grant and our established need at West Craven Park for the walking trail and outdoor fitness equipment.
All right, board, are there any questions for Mr. Wilks?
Chairman, I make a motion that we approve.
Okay, we have a motion, and I have a second. Any further discussion on the motion? Hear none. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Chair Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I make one comment while Mr. Wilks here, just to let the public aware, Billy is the president-elect of the North Carolina Parks and Recreation Association as of last week. We're really proud of him for that. Lead the statewide organization.
It's an honor for Craven County, is what I've told Jack today. We're excited to be able to do that. So we've got a couple of years of work ahead of us, but it'll be, it'll be an honor for us, no doubt. So, thank y'all.
Appreciate what you do, Billy.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. Next on the agenda is the Water Department. We have a budget amendment. Mr. Al Gerard, our water superintendent. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, everyone. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
As due, is it okay to say Happy New Year?
Yes.
Happy New Year. I think I can get by without one.
You can even say Merry Christmas.
Not yet. I'm here tonight to ask for your approval to move some money from our revenue account over to the account that we use to pay for tap installations. I think you probably remember I was here a couple of months ago because we were in a predicament where our contractor had to basically retire, and we had to hire another one, and it's, we knew it was going to cost a little bit more to be able to install these, but fortunately, we're making a little bit of money there instead of losing money like we were doing before. So I need this $40,000 basically moved over so I can continue to pay for these taps being installed. If you, and I did a little number on it so you can remember, we can do about 25 to 30 taps with $40,000. And hopefully, if things keep going like they are, I may come back and see you again and ask for some more money to be transferred from the revenue over to, I mean, building is good. We usually do somewhere around 100 to 100-plus taps a year. We'll probably be in the 75 range before long, so looking good. So I do need to move that money so I can pay to have them installed.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hear none. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
No.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Chair Booker?
Yes.
And Chairman Jones?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Gerard. We appreciate it, sir.
Thank you all. Be safe.
Next item is the Planning Department. We have with us tonight Mr. Chip Bartlett from Holland Consulting Planters, and also Mr. Bumgarner. Good evening, Mr. Bartlett.
Good evening. Tonight, we have before you CDBG NR, or Neighborhood Revitalization Program contract award related to a replacement home at 106 Elaine Drive in Pantsboro. We solicited RFPs from manufactured home dealers. First round, we just got one proposal, so we went out for a second proposal last month. We got three proposals in. The low bidder or low proposal was Clayton Homes of Greenville at a price of $137,000 for the turnkey home and the demolition of the existing flood damaged manufactured home. So what we're asking for tonight is a board approval to approve the low bid award to Clayton Homes of Greenville in the amount of $137,000 with CDBG NR funds.
All right, you heard the request.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? I do want the board to recognize that this is Hurricane Matthew.
Yes, it is.
Hurricane Matthew. We're glad to see some funding for it, but Elaine Drive, Commissioner Mark and myself both know that during Hurricane Matthew, it was flooded bad. And glad to see a little relief coming down to help these citizens, so.
Agreed.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Hear no more discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passed. Item B. Good evening, Mr. Bumgarner.
Good evening. Item B, we actually have two subdivisions for your Item B, uh, we actually have two subdivisions for your consideration this evening. The Planning Board met back on December the 3rd and recommended the following subdivisions for approval. The first is Canalwood. This property is owned by Canalwood LLC, surveyed by Terry Wheeler. It's located in Township 1 off of Wilmar Road. Let's see here. The subdivision contains approximately 8.90 acres, and the lots are proposed to be served by the Craven County Water and Individual Septic Systems. A vote to approve the subdivision is needed.
All right, you heard the request. What's desire the Board?
Make a motion to move approve?
We have a motion to approve the subdivision on, uh, Canalwood LLC. Do I have a second? I have a second. Any discussion on the motion? Here none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passed. All right, item C?
The next subdivision, the second one, is called Forest Oaks, Section 1C. The property is owned by D.R. Horton Incorporated. Uh, it was surveyed by Herbert Nobles. Uh, the engineering was done by Thomas Engineering. This property is located in Township 1 off of US Highway 17. It contains 13 lots on 17.15 acres.
17 or 7?
No, it was, excuse me, I'm sorry, 7.15 acres, yes. 13 lots, 7.15 acres. Uh, each of the lots is proposed to be served by the Craven County Water System and Individual Septic Systems. A vote to approve the subdivision is needed.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, discussion?
I just have a question. How many, this says Section 1. Is there a Section 2, 3, 4?
There, there have been other sections that were approved previously, and in the scheme of their development patterns, this is the section they're referring to as Section 1C, which, you know, is a development pattern for them. They're going to pursue this first and then this grouping, so there will be some additional properties, uh, out there for consideration.
The reason I'm asking is since we have a housing crisis in Craven County, I'm interested in how many total we might see built as part in this area. Do you know off the top of your?
I, I don't.
Okay.
I do not.
Any other questions? Don, I'd, go ahead.
Oh, I will tell you that they, they are looking and they have been pursuing, um, both raw land as well as subdivisions that were not completed. And they have been, uh, working diligently to identify those sites, and they have made the statements that they are willing to put in the water, the sewer, the road improvements, and do the entire development. So the, uh, we've had those discussions and they, I know, they're currently trying to decide with the COVID crisis came along, they were trying to decide really what direction they wanted to go in as far as how many structures they would be building in this fiscal year.
Don, I have a question. Behind lots 35 and 38, uh, there's a, a partial land there and a little sliver that goes out to the road. Um, what is that? I mean, is, is that what they're going to put septic tanks, or it just, is that part of those two lots?
There, there's a, there's a cluster area that includes four lots back there behind some of the existing lots. That is a proposed off-site sewer area.
Okay.
And, uh, then, you know, these other, sometimes these other little parcels are left and they end up deeding those off to a particular lot that is closest to it.
Okay.
And that's an easement that goes back there to that. It's probably where you're referring to, an easement that goes back to the four off-site sewer systems.
Okay. Any other questions, concerns? Here none, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion passed. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next on the agenda is Carts. Ms. Kelly Walker. Good evening, Ms. Walker.
Good evening. Um, the first item that we have is a, um, is we're requesting that Carts temporarily suspend fares due to COVID-19 for the timeframe of January 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2021. And fares would automatically resume July 1st of 2021. Uh, we believe now is the most optimal time to suspend fares for several reasons. One is the procedures and measures have been put in place to reduce potential COVID-19 exposure while riding transit. Two, most businesses and agencies have resumed operation to some degree. Three, transportation is an identified barrier to employment. Four, this will assist with economic recovery in our service area. Five, CARES Act funding is reimbursing the cost of expenses related to providing transit service. And, and six, fares are deducted before determining that amount of eligible CARES Act reimbursement. These are unprecedented times for public transit, and suspension of fares is unprecedented for Carts. We understand that some adjustments may be needed, and we are ready to tackle those challenges while providing a safe transportation option within our service area to those who might otherwise not be able to afford it. In conjunction with other efforts Carts has made this year regarding employment-related transportation, and for the reasons already stated, we believe now is the most beneficial time to offer a temporary fare suspension. Um, and that would be through June 30th, 2021, which is the date that the North Carolina Department of Transportation, 5311 CARES Act operating funds will expire.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Okay, you have a motion and a second to suspend fares. Uh, do I have any discussion on the Board? Here none, discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passed. All right, item B.
Thank you. Um, the next is a budget amendment for vehicle replacement purchase. The North Carolina Department of Transportation has approved the combined capital application for four replacement vehicles for this fiscal year using 5339 funding, and that funding was assigned by NCDOT. The current Carts budget reflects the purchase of three replacement vehicles. We're asking for a budget amendment to acknowledge the available funding for the fourth vehicle as well as authorization to order that vehicle. The matching funds, excuse me, would come out of the Carts budget through the sale of the vehicle being replaced. If that amount is insufficient to cover the local match, we would use contract revenue for the difference. Excuse me, we're requesting the Board approve the budget amount, the budget amendment shown in Attachment 15B.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the budget amendment of $41,000. Is there any discussion from the Board?
I, I have questions looking at the 41. We've got 36, 6, 44. What is the cost of the vehicle?
Uh, the cost of the vehicle is about $65,000. Um, but we, we already had some in the budget that would cover that difference, so we're only asking for the amount that we don't have in there.
Okay, so this is, the 41 is the delta?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, got it, thank you. It seemed low, that's why I was asking.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, any other questions? Here none, Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the room.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Chair Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Before she leaves, I don't know if y'all know, but Kelly is, is racking her brains over a couple of other committees she's serving on. And I've got to commend her on what she's doing. For money-wise, we've got a commissioner on this board who's been asking for this for some time, and it's, it's, it's coming, and we're, we're getting there. And Kelly, for what you're doing, trying to get this, I know it's actually hell and everything else, because the money that's flowing into you and how you're pushing it out, and what, how you're thinking outside the box, I commend you and your staff, what you're doing down there.
Thank you. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Kelly. Appreciate it. All right, next on the agenda is Social Services. Uh, Mr. Jeffrey Merritt, our Social Services Director. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Chairman. Mr. County Manager. We bring before you some budget amendments this evening. The first one is, pertains to CARES Act funding that we are receiving through our, um, Area Agency on Aging. Um, this funding, as you will see, will help us to, um, allow for some additional mills and modifications to the senior center, to help us prepare for social distancing and safety precautions when serving mills and some other items as we continue to provide service. Um, again, this is all CARES Act money that was funded from the federal government, passed through the state act, so we're just getting that money now. I'll be happy to answer any questions regarding that.
All right, do you have any questions before we take the motion? All right, here none, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? This is, the amount, uh, as stated, is for $70,379. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the room.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes, yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
My second budget amendment also relates to COVID funding that we received through the state CARES Act. Um, this money is for supplemental payments to foster homes where children were in their homes for the months of August and September. It was additional $100 payment for each child. Um, and we are, this money is also 100% funded, so we are asking to add that into our budget as it has to run through it.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the budget amendment of $17,500. Is there any discussion? Here none, Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the room.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
And our third and final amendment is pertains to the Special Adoption Promotions Fund. Um, these are funds that we receive, um, if we meet our baseline for the number of adoptions that are finalized in a year. Also, if we achieve adoptions with sibling groups or what sort of children with, have special needs, and we'll receive money for those individual ones. So this is money carried over from last budget year, this budget year, this is also, um, fully funded through the state and federal government.
All right, you've heard the request, I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Here none, the motion is to approve, uh, a budget amendment of $27,639. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the room.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes, sir.
You're going to see, in January, you're going to see more money come forward for approval for the CARES Act and the other act for the Council on Aging. Ms. Holloway, let me go with you, right?
Mm-hmm.
We are raking, they are raking their heads on how to spend this money. They are thinking outside the box everywhere they can to get money. We've got money for the first time ever since I've been up here for seven years now that we've never seen before. And it's not because we can't spend it, because of the COVID-19, folks don't want us in our, their houses to take care of them. We've increased congregate meals, we've increased home delivery meals, your people have increased what they're doing, providing services. I mean, his staff, not only in that, but on the Council on Aging, and AAA has done a superb job, and we're just bonkers on how to get all of this spent. It's no fault of anybody, but we're coming back for another change, for more money that we have that we're going to try to spend, and it's not looking like DSS or George Street. Everybody has got their share of what they need and what they feel they can spend to make everything work without blowing it. So they're, they're doing good, and I commend, let me go for.
And, and as you said, you know, Alyssa Andrews Brown at the Senior Center as well, um, she actually came forth with a lot of these ideas, you know, we all met together and what we needed. These were some long-term projects that we'd always wanted to do, especially as related modifications to building. Um, you know, that building is an historic building, so there are some challenges there in relation to access and things like that. So, um, we are working with the buildings and grounds right now and trying to go through and get quotes for some of those, so there may be some more money added. I think there's still some available where, you know, we just, we're trying to get this process going and estimating how much we thought those projects would cost. So, um, we're still trying to do that. Um, you know, it's always a balance of, um, you know, being flush with money and doing services and having the equal way, so, um, also, if you know volunteers related to the Home Delivery Meals Program, that's something that we're always continuing to try to find, so, um, they can help us possibly with this money as well. Yeah, thank you.
Any of the Board have any more questions for Mr. Merritt before he leaves? All right, here none, thank you, sir.
Thank you. I'll have a good one.
All right, next is the airport, um, property acquisition, Mr. Shorter, Airport Director, and also we have with us, Mr. Cushman, Airport Attorney. Welcome, gentlemen.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Appreciate your time tonight. Um, as your package shows, we're here to talk about three pieces of residential property. However, late breaking news, uh, last week, one of the owners has pulled his, uh, willingness to, to sell his property, so we'll only be talking about two, the, the even numbers, the 722 and 724 that are on the north side of the, uh, Claremont Road. Uh, like the, the form says, all these owners had come forward and, uh, asked us if we wanted to purchase this property initially. Uh, I think the, the one owner kind of got wind of what the valuation was and decided that, uh, he would pull his property at, at this time anyway, and didn't want to go forward with the process. So as you can see on the GIS map, um, again, north of Claremont Road, there's two pieces of property, and those two pieces actually are the most conterminous with what the airport already owns. If you look on the Google Earth map, you can see right next to it, there's a triangle shape that's, uh, right adjacent to the, the airport property proper, and the airport al- already, uh, has control of that triangle piece. So these additional two pieces expands that area. Normally, this is a, uh, item that would be anti-encroachment issues, like a lot of the other properties that we, uh, purchase. Again, it's on the FAA-approved airport layout plan. It will be reimbursable by FAA grant money. The thing about this property, when we get into doing the terminal expansion, we have a maintenance building that's going to get displaced, and this might end up being a perfect place to do that, so, uh, easy access Claremont Road there to get deliveries and things like that, so that might be a very good use of it. But for right now, it's a pure anti-encro- encroachment issue. And then the final piece, you can see the valuation for the two pieces of property with the tax valuation there as well. Anything to add, Charles?
I would just add that since we submitted the materials for the agenda, the review appraisals have come in, and the review appraisals all confirm the original appraised value, so we're ready to proceed at the county meeting.
Okay, are there any questions for airport stand?
I have a question.
Vice Chairman.
Andy, the, this makes perfect sense to me that if we can purchase this property that's adjacent to the airport, we should do so. At what point, or is there any point where we would say, hey, we're going to purchase it if necessary, we're going to condemn it, whatever the proper term? Or are we just going to piecemeal, pick up a piece here and there? What, is there a plan?
Yes, sir, and the plan is the latter right now. We are picking it up piecemeal. Like I said, it's been identified on the airport layout plan as future acquisition, that's how we define it, but we have not hit a decision point to where we would need to go out. In the cases of all three of these, we did not go ask. They actually approached, one approached us, and it was a little bit of a domino effect with a couple others approaching us, but for right now, we are still in the receive mode, more or less, for...
Voluntary.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Other questions? All right, here none. Do I have a motion that we...
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to give the airport the authority to purchase the stated property at 722 and 724. Here no more discussion? Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll on this.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate y'all being here. All right, next on the agenda is Human Resources. Ms. Amber Parker, the request to set the salary of the registered deeds.
Good evening.
Good evening.
North Carolina General Statute 153A-92 authorized commissioners to adjust salaries, allowances, and other compensation of the sheriff and registered deeds positions. The Craven County Board of Commissioners set the starting salary for the registered deeds position at $46,800 on November 4th, 2019. Following the election and after the successful candidate takes office, commissioners retain the right to adjust the minimum starting salary upward in accordance with the years of related experience held by the successful candidate. Based on the years of related experience held by the successful candidate, Sherry Richard, the registered deed salary is recommended to be set at $73,119 effective today. This is the same salary set by the board for registered deeds Richard prior to today. The salary of the registered deeds will also receive a 2% cost of living allowance that will be effective December 23rd, 2020, and the salary will be $74,582 effective December 23rd.
All right, you heard the request. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion in a second. We'll take that as a second. Any discussion on the motion? Here none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Amber. Next on the agenda is appointments, and we, as always, we have first our pending appointments. Ms. County Manager, if we will put it on our list that the vice chairman and myself, and we'd like to meet with you and discuss some of these. I think individual commissioners have come to us about a few of them, and I think we need to go ahead and discuss that. I won't go through that list. You have them there for you, but if you do have anybody that you recommend, please let us know. Item B on the appointments is the first appointment tonight for consideration is the Co City Craven County Library Board. Mr. Marion Davis does not wish to seek reappointment. You do have in your agenda packet Ms. Jean Davenport, who is seeking appointment to fill this vacancy.
I'd like to nominate Ms. Davenport.
All right, we have a motion for Ms. Davenport. Are there any other nominations? Here none. Ms. Davenport will be accepted by acclamation. Next will be the Craven County Health Board. You have Mr. Irvin Patrick, who is currently serving on that board. I believe the clerk has stated, I remember when Mr. Patrick went on there, I don't think he exceeds our 10-year rule, so he is qualified to be reappointed. Vice Chairman, you serve with him?
So moved.
All right, we have him. Vice Chair asked for his reappointment. Are there any other nominations? Here none. He will be accepted, be reappointed. Next is the Fireman's Relief Fund Board of Trustees. You have two appointments there this evening. First, you have Mr. William McCoy, who represents Township III, Co City. He does seek appointment. I'd like to ask if the board will allow for him to continue on that. Here no more nominations from the board. He will be reappointed. And then the next would be Mr. Troy Cleland from Township VIII, West New Bern. He does not wish to be reappointed. You have in your agenda packets a nomination application for Mr. Stuart Blunt, who seeks appointment to fill this vacancy.
I'd like to nominate Dr. Blunt, please.
All right, we have a nomination for Mr. Blunt. Are there any other nominations? Here none. Mr. Blunt will be accepted. Then please take note of upcoming appointments for, in January, of the CHSAMA Board, the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, and then the Senior Tar Heel Legislative Committee. All right, any more on appointments this evening? Here none. The next item is County Attorney's Report. Mr. Grady.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good evening again. I have two items for the board's consideration this evening. Both involve county-owned real estate acquired through the tax foreclosure process. The first item is 904 Caroline Court in New Bern with a parcel ID number of 20171077. This is on for what I will call final approval after the upset bid process. We previously approved a sales price of $2,000. The past due taxes and the cost of the tax foreclosure was $2,604.39, and the tax value of the property is $5,080. I recommend that the board consider approving this transaction so we can execute the deed and get it back on the rolls.
All right, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second. Second.
Second. Any discussion on the motion? Motion is the conveyance of 904 Carolina Court. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Mr. Chairman, the second item is 108 Arnold Street in Vanceboro with a parcel ID number of 1V09066. As with the first parcel, this is ready for final approval after the upset bid period. The offer amount was $1,000. The taxes and the cost of foreclosure were $3,803.68, and the tax value of the property is $6,410. I will note, this is owned jointly with the town of Vanceboro, and as we historically proceed with jointly-owned property, we let the municipalities go first, and the town has approved this amount of $1,000, so it's before the board for your consideration of the final approval.
All right, do I have a motion?
I'm moved.
Have a motion in a second.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? The motion is to approve the conveyance of 108 Arnold Street in Vanceboro. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
That concludes my report. Thank you, sir.
How about C?
What about C?
Is there a C? I'm sorry.
Vanceboro leased a grant.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yep, thank you.
You were so perfect, didn't you?
I know. I was looking for about $1,000, and here I am.
You wide open.
This is a proposed lease with the town of Vanceboro for a building in Vanceboro that has historically and currently houses the Vanceboro Public Library. I'm sure the county manager could give us a little more of the background, but as we understand it, basically, the town would like the county and/or the library system to undertake the maintenance of the building essentially, since it's more of a countywide use or service, if you will. The lease that I prepared, and it has been vetted by the Vanceboro Town Attorney, and they agree to it, basically gives us a 50-year lease. The thought is, as we maintain and make perhaps capital investments in the property, that we need to be able to secure that investment with a very long period of possession, and that's what this lease does. It's about as simple as we can make it, which I know is not what lawyers are normally about, but the thought is, we use the building, we take care of it, we maintain what needs to be maintained, and we get to use it for a very long period. There are a few very specific items that the town will continue to take care of that are more within the town's bailiwick, if you will. I'm glad to answer any questions the board may have, but the matter is before you for approval or further consideration and discussion as you may desire.
Commissioner Liner, you have a question?
Yes, sir. Could the manager, could we, what the town is going to be responsible for, so we all understand?
Yes, sir. So historically, the town has covered the city sewer and water charges for the facility. We also asked them to continue, because Vanceboro does the trash collection for that area for the town, so we'd ask that be thrown in, along with the landscaping and maintenance of the yard. Those are going to be the four things they'll maintain through the lease.
We pick up the electrical and the maintenance of the facility.
We're already, well, we're already paying electric bill through the library, but we'll pick up the maintenance and janitorial, sir.
Mr. Chair, thank you, sir.
All right, any other questions?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. I'm always a little concerned about taking over the maintenance for a building that we don't own. Is there, do we know of any large capital maintenance expenses that we might have coming up that we might incur?
You have immediately a $14,000 HVAC and heating unit replacement charge. Our maintenance crew has been through the facility, some minor things in a restroom right now that need to be worked. I consider minor plumbing things. Obviously, it's a roof, you know, it's going to have to be replaced somewhere in this 50-year period. Structurally, the building is very sound, but it's, you know, we haven't gone through it with a fine-tooth comb either, but we know there's some things right off the bat we're going to have to address.
Thank you.
Our biggest issue with that facility, though, if we don't take it over for 50 years, and the county take the responsibility over, then we're going to have to close that facility, where Vanceboro will have no library and move forward. Because right now, we're having our employees work in that facility in this type of weather without any heat at all.
Non-starter, non-starter. Okay. I can support it.
And I will be asking, after we approve this lease, I would like to discuss right after, if we can, about the HVAC system. Any other questions about the lease agreement? Here none. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion on the motion? Here none. All those in favor of the lease agreement, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Also, if we may, Ms. County Manager, as it was stated by Commissioner Liner and yourself, currently, the HVAC system there at the Vanceboro Library is not working properly. Staff did go through some of the summer months without adequate cooling and now without adequate heat. I do want to commend the maintenance department here in the county. They have been out there, and I see some of them out through the door, and I thank you for what you've done to try to assist during these times. But this is something of urgency, and we have got an initial quote of somewhere around $14,000 to install a new HVAC system. If the board would take and consider that tonight and vote upon it, they would definitely have to come back with an exact amount with a budget amendment at a later time, but it will allow staff to go ahead and order that unit and possibly get it in sooner than later.
Make that motion.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Is any further discussion? Here no discussion. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark? Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell? Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. Thank you. Appreciate that. All right, next item is County Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, I appreciate the opportunity. I have just two small things to remind you. We did cancel our December 21st meeting because it was the week of Christmas, but we did schedule a December 14th work session of the board. This will be more focused toward budget, but also dealing with further discussion of replacement for District III County Commissioner's seat. That meeting will be held at 8:30 a.m., again, December 14th, at the Craven County Convention Center, in the room we were in today, which is try on A and B upstairs. Any questions about that? And that's again, 8:30 start time. And I just want to thank Chairman Mark for his years of service. We do call him the Hurricane Chairman, but hopefully, Commissioner Jones, you won't have to deal with that this year. He took them all for you. But Chairman Mark, I appreciate your time with me and all the time we spent on the phone talking about COVID and everything else, and certainly appreciate that this year and the support. And I want to welcome the new chairman, Commissioner Jones, and Vice Chairman, Commissioner Booker. I look forward to working with you in the coming months and over the next year. Here, if you have any questions or anything I can help you with.
Any questions for the county manager?
Thank you.
Here none. Thank you, sir. All right, we are a little bit ahead of time. We've done good tonight, so if it's all right, we will go forward with Commissioner's comments. And Commissioner Mitchell, you want to begin for us this evening?
Nothing to say, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Commissioner Liner?
No, sir. I'd just like to thank Tom for his leadership and what he's done. It's time for a break. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner McCabe?
Yes, I'd, thank Mr. Tom Mark for his outstanding work he did this past year. He took a lot of beating, but he held him there. He is a good man, and I appreciate it very much. I also thank for the new chairman and the vice chair, and also thank, this is a very quick meeting. Thank you. I've got time to get to my game.
All right. Commissioner Mark?
I wish the chairman and the vice chairman a good year.
That's right.
No hurricane.
Yeah, no hurricane, also no...
No nothing. And no COVID.
No, that's right. That's the most important thing.
Vice Chair Booker?
Now, I also want to echo the comments that were just made, thanking Chairman, former Chairman Mark for a great year and his leadership during a difficult year, certainly. I'm sure we've had other difficult years. I know we have, but this was certainly, stands up for the best of them, so thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I will say that in my cell phone, I have Tom down as Chairman Mark, and he's been there for years, and I don't change it because I know you're coming back, so always, that's how I identify you when you call. But definitely, there's no way to put into words our thanks for your leadership. I just want to state for the citizens who may be listening, the Board of Commissioners convened this afternoon at 1:00 and had a long evening, afternoon of meeting and interviewing candidates for the District III vacancy. Just want to state, the following individuals were interviewed. We presented them with three questions. Each candidate had the exact same questions. They were given the exact same time, amount of time to address the board, to try to be transparent and fair to all candidates. The following candidates came before the board and addressed Ms. Brenda Carter George, who was nominated by the Craven County Democratic Party, Ms. Barbara Jean Sampson, Ms. Beatrice Smith, Ms. Janice Trice, and Mr. Gregory Singleton. I just want to thank all of these individuals for taking their time to address the board. I think we've got a great list of candidates that came before us, and they're all qualified for the position and all have a desire to serve their fellow man. It was decided by the Board of Commissioners that we will recess this meeting, as stated by our county manager, to reconvene at the convention center on December the 14th at 8:30 a.m. This will be the first item of business that we will take up that day, is to vote on who will succeed Commissioner Sampson to take over this seat. That is our plan. We do not foresee any reason that we won't, but if there is, we would call another special meeting at a later time to finalize that vote. I think all of the Board of Commissioners have agreed that if we vote on this individual on December the 14th, that they will take office the first meeting of January 2021, correct?
Yes, sir.
And that will allow staff time to work with this individual to prepare them to come in into the new year and be ready to go to work. Anything else that needs to be said? And I just wanted to state that for the record, to make sure everybody understood. We want to be transparent about this process, and I will say, we've taken a lot of votes as a Board of Commissioners over the years. This is probably one of the hardest votes that we will ever take, to put in the hands of six individuals who will be the representative of District III for the next two years. And we do not take this lightly. It is a very serious obligation that we have. A lot of thought has gone into this and a lot of prayer, and we're going to continue to give that prayer. Is there anything else to bring before the Board of Commissioners tonight? Here none. Do I have a motion that we recess?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We stand recessed.